To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I wanted to. I got a motion to move the two items under new business ahead of all the hearings tonight because we have a couple of town employees that may wish to speak or they may have any, they may have some questions that they may be able to answer for the council on the new items under new business. So I want to find our town tax assessor first. Let me see. I think, I think I, I think I see Brian.
Mary Lynn should raise her hand.
Hey Liz, can you raise your hand? Oh, there she is. Liz, you there?
Yes, can you see me?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
And Brian. Brian Rosso, you out there?
Hi. Yes, I'm here Frank.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so first item under new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to extend the date for payment of local motor vehicle taxes to the town of Hopkinton from September 8th, 2020 to a future date pending final determination from the state on the motor vehicle tax exemption amount for the Rhode Island cities and towns. Brian, you want to just give us a brief synopsis of, I know you, Bill, and I think Liz had meetings on this and what you guys came up with? Brian?
Do you want Bill to explain it?
Brian, you there?
Does he have to unmute himself again?
Yes.
Brian, you there? Yeah, talking to the.
Yeah, talking.
Can't really, you there Brian?
Frank, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so to bring you up to speed, I'm sure you guys read the memo on the motor vehicle ex, uh, tax exemption. At this point, the governor is proposing a tax exemption that's different than what we currently have in our tax roll. What we have in our tax roll is in accordance with Rhode Island, the current Rhode Island general law. So until we determine or have a decision by the state as to what that tax exemption amount is going to be, it wouldn't make sense for us to send out our tax bills. We've made a mistake in the past where we sent them out prematurely and then the state changed some legislation and we ended up having to send out supplemental, actually refund checks to, I want to say 50-plus people. Some of them were very minute for like a dollar, $2, and it's just, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of postage, and I think that we should probably hold off. I think it would make sense for us to, to wait until the state makes a determination on the amount of that, that tax exemption.
Okay, that makes sense Brian. Liz, do you have anything to add?
Um, I think Brian summed it up. It, it's basically, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, okay. Um, it's basically changing the excise exemption from 4,000, which is what we are using right now per the passed legislation, going to 3,500 per vehicle. So it does change quite a bit and it would be labor intensive if we sent the bills now just for timing versus waiting. And it has to do with Article 9 in the general laws, if anybody wants to follow it in legislation. It's Article 9, Section 44-34-1-1, Arm Excise Tax Phase Out. So that one whole section she's changing. And it will change over the next three years. The, this year and the future two years were supposed to be an exemption of 4,000, 5,000, and 6,000 per vehicle respectively, but it's opting to change to 3,500, 4,000, and 4,500. So it's changing quite a bit over the next three years. So I think we should wait as well.
Okay, thanks Liz. Counsel, any questions for Brian or Liz?
I just wanted to make a point, although it doesn't deal with vehicle taxes, at the annual meeting of the fire district in Ashaway last week, was a question when the tax bills were going up because of, you know, the town getting their tax bills off because of the, of the state and stuff like that. So I know the fire district, even though they own tax vehicles, is concerned about a lot of these tax procedures for local taxpayers.
Yeah, so I can speak to that, Scott, so.
I can as well.
Yeah, actually Liz, if you want to, go ahead.
Okay. I was able to split the tax rolls, so we removed motor vehicles, and I now have two tax rolls. So motor vehicles will be held, real property and tangibles will not. And I was able to work with Vision so that both fire districts already should have received their files so they can work with it and bill on time. So they are not going to be held up just because we are.
I appreciate you knowing that. You told me something I didn't know, but I'm just going by impression I had going to the annual meeting last Thursday. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I actually met with George Mayhew from Ashaway today, and he already has his file and he's working on it and he's thrilled. So we're in good shape.
It just happened in a couple of days.
Yeah.
I have no problems with this.
Okay. Sylvia, anything?
The only, the only question I have is, as the agenda item reads, that we may extend the, the date that taxes are due on motor vehicles from September 8th, 2020 to a future date. Can, can we leave it open to, tonight, or do we have to pick a date tonight?
I think it's left to be open because we don't know what the state.
Well, that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, good, okay.
I'm in favor, Scott, again. I'm in favor of leaving it open so we know what we can do.
A move that we.
Sharon, do you have any questions?
Oh.
No, it sounds fine to me.
Okay.
A move that we extend the date for payment of local motor vehicle taxes to the town of Hopkinton from September 8th, 2020, to a future date pending final determination from the state on the motor vehicle tax exemption amount for Rhode Island cities and towns.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further comments, folks? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sharon, did you weigh in?
Yes, it aye.
Okay, all right, that's unanimous Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Brian. Okay. Next up under new business number two, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to authorize the town council president to send a letter of support to the Rhode Island Senate regarding pending legislation designated as House Bill 7555 and entitled an act relating to an amendment of and in addition to an act to incorporate the First Hopkinton Cemetery Association, the purpose of which is to amend the corporate charter of the First Hopkinton Cemetery Association passed at the January 1880 session of the Rhode Island General Assembly, as subsequently amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, questions by the council? Scott, you weren't at the meeting in, in 1880, were you?
No, I wasn't. I had, both of my parents are buried there. My mother's ashes were partly put with my father and another, in the farm that she was born in, in Clocks Falls. But I have my parents there, two grandparents, two sets of great-grandparents, and I also have Thomas Potter, and I'm a descendant of both his wives. His second wife was the mother of Caleb Potter, who was a town clerk of Hopkin during the War of 1812. But I want to also note that the First Hopkin Cemetery, you have one of the most interesting gravestones undoubtedly in Rhode Island. It has a price of the gravestone engraved on the back, Mary Clocks Saunders, which is a great trivia thing about the First Hopkin Cemetery. And it's also the gravesite of Jacob Babcock. If you're familiar with Ashway, the Babcock House, he was a great promoter of the deference in the Underground Railroad, and he is in the First Hopkin Cemetery. Thank you.
Okay.
And I would like to publicly thank the, the trustees of the First Hopkin Cemetery for their interest and care for the First Hopkin Cemetery. Thank you.
Okay, any other counsel, questions, concerns? Okay. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. I guess I'll get together with Bill or Lisa and figure out that letter that Representative Kennedy is looking for, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you all. Okay. All right, so I need a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sharon?
I said aye.
Okay, I guess I can't hear you. Okay.
No, I think that we say it at the same time.
All right, so I want to, I guess Kevin, I'm going to, I don't know if you have Attorney Mocelli's number, or Attorney Mocelli, if you could raise your hand and I could unmute your line. Looks like he might be there. Is this Attorney Mocelli?
This is Attorney Petracca and Mocelli. We're here with the applicant, Chairman.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, I was wondering if it's, if it's okay with Attorney Petracca and Mocelli, if we could take all three items, I guess, at once. I'll just read the licenses and then, then we'll get into it. What I'll do is I'll, I'll have either Attorney Petracca or Mocelli open up with some, some statements and comments, if you like, and then I'll turn it over to our solicitor and then also to the council after that, and then ultimately the public, so.
That, that's perfect, fine with us, Chairman.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Okay, first up is the Class B, Class BV Liquor License. Open a remote hearing on an application for a Class BV Liquor License filed by New Frontier LLC. Teresa Dove Rodinghouse, President, 44 Oak Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891, for property located at 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804, owned by BCP LLC, 15 Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804. Next is the Vicshiling License. Discuss and consider opening a remote hearing on an application for a Vicshiling License filed by New Frontier LLC. Teresa Dove Rodinghouse, President, 44 Oak Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891, for property located at 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804, owned by BCP LLC, 15 Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804. And lastly, the Holiday Sales License. Discuss and consider opening a remote hearing on an application for a Holiday Sales License filed by New Frontier LLC. Teresa Dove Rodinghouse, President, 44 Oak Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891, for property located at 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804, owned by BCP LLC, 15 Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804. Okay, so we've got three licenses before the board tonight. I'll turn it over to Attorney Petracca or Mocelli for any opening comments before we get into our hearing.
Thank you Chairman. It's Attorney Peter Petracca, 330 Silver Spring Street, Providence, Rhode Island. That's where we're all located right now. I'm just briefly going to go over my client's qualifications as an applicant, and then she's here whenever any of you are ready to ask any questions if need be. Ms. Rodinghouse has been involved in the hospitality industry for 19 years. She hails from Virginia. She started 19 years ago as a server in a diner, worked her way, all the way up to a beer manager at the Carl Strauss Brewery in San Diego, where she managed the restaurant. She was a beer education teacher regarding with the pairings, and she was also a server trainer. She's familiar with all Rhode Island general laws. She went on, after she left San Diego, she became a catering manager and cook, and she's currently a server at Mia's Restaurant right now in Pawtucket, Connecticut. She learned of this opportunity. It's been her lifelong dream to own her own establishment, and unfortunately, prior to COVID, she was ready to go in a, in a quicker pace, but because of COVID, she's been delayed somewhat. I will tell you that there are some fire issues that are being taken care of, and she is looking to do a breakfast, lunch, and dinner establishment, which does require her to change some of the cooking equipment in the building. We filed the application on the understanding that if you did grant the license, that nothing would happen until all the approvals were granted by the other establishment, by the other branches of the government. But because of the situation with the economy, it's too much of a risk at this point for Ms. Rodinghouse not to know where she may stand and then end up investing a lot of money in this restaurant without any opportunity. So that's why, that's why we're here first. Want to explain to you what's going on. I wish it was in person, but obviously it's not. Answer any of your questions and then move on from there.
Okay, thank you Attorney Petracca. Anything else for Attorney Mocelli or the applicant before we begin?
Not at this time.
Okay, sir, thank you. All right, I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor, Kevin McAllister. I guess Kevin's going to fire off, I guess, a bunch of questions that might be certainly germane to this, this license hearing. Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm hoping to ask these questions to Teresa Dove Rodinghouse, if she's, if she's on an open mic. That would be great.
She's here Kevin.
All right, thank you. Could you provide the town council, sitting as a licensing board, with some more details as to your experience, any experience you have in terms of managing an operation that served alcohol to the public?
Yes, so I have been in the restaurant business for 19 years. I did do a lot of servo training. I've been a shift supervisor, I've been a manager, and I've also owned my own catering company in San Diego, where I did cater to the San Diego Police Department and the governor. And now, you know, I've been a cook at a catering company out here, and now I am one of the lead servers at Mia's.
Okay, and your experience in terms of managing the service of alcoholic beverages, more specifically, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at?
Okay.
Could you discuss that with some more?
I'm sorry?
Could you just provide some more detail as to your experience in managing the service of alcoholic beverages to the public?
Yes, I do have, I am Cicerone certified, so I have taken that course. I was a server trainer, beer educator at Carl Strauss Brewing Company in San Diego for about six, seven years. And then also owning my own catering company, I did manage the liquor there also.
Okay, was your catering company, did it have a restaurant component, or was it just a kitchen where you catered events like wedding receptions, things like that?
Correct. It was a private catering company with alcohol.
Okay, so you didn't actually, you actually didn't have a full-blown restaurant open to the public, such as you're contemplating running here?
No, sir.
Is that correct? Okay. Now, the, the applicant is actually the LLC New Frontier, correct?
Yes.
And what is your title with that LLC?
I am the president.
And who are the members of that LLC?
Only me.
Okay, you're the sole member of the LLC?
Yes.
Um, and what, if any, is the relationship between New Frontier LLC and BCP LLC, which is the owner of the real estate and building upon which you are hoping to operate?
Landlord, tenant, I am the tenant.
Okay. Who are the, who are the owners or members of that LLC, if you know?
Patrick Kane and Bill.
What's Bill's full name?
Thanks, sorry.
So that's Mr. Beggs, B-E-G-G-S?
Yes.
Okay, and those were the two owners of the former operation at the site known as Phone Yard BBQ, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, have either Mr. Kane or Mr. Beggs or their LLC, again, that's BCP LLC, have any of those individuals or entities provided any financial backing for your proposed operation under New Frontier LLC?
No, sir.
When you filed the application with the clerk's office, did either Mr. Kane or Mr. Beggs accompany you to the clerk's office and help finance the application fee?
No, sir.
And I know you, you provided a certificate of completion in the dated of April of 2020 of your successful certification from TIPS slash STOP, is that correct?
Yes.
And have you discussed with Mr. Kane, Patrick Kane, any potential involvement he might have with the operation of New Frontier LLC if you're granted the licenses you seek tonight?
Yes, he has no involvement.
And what, what would the future plans be relative to any future involvement by Mr. Kane?
None.
Okay. And would you be able to provide an assurance to the town council tonight of that fact? Or that promise?
What type of assurance are you looking for, solicitor? Do you want it to sell? What, what are you looking for?
Well, in other words, rather than an answer, a yes/no answer to a question I asked, in your own words, can you make a statement relative to the future potential involvement of Mr. Kane or Mr. Beggs in the operation of New Frontier LLC?
I have no, tell them then.
Yes, they will have no involvement.
Okay. And understanding what Attorney Petracca said a few minutes ago, what's your understanding of the current status of the, the inspections with the fire, state fire marshal for the premises?
The inspection should be ready to go in a few days. I did have him do a walkthrough. He explained everything that needed to be done. It should be done within a couple of days here.
Okay, have you had recent communications, like the end of last week or this week with him, in terms of setting up a new walkthrough?
No, not yet.
Okay, so how do you know you should have, have some progress here in the next couple of days? What arrangements have been made to support that?
The progress is with the, with the fire alarm system itself. There were things they had to do that they should have done within the next couple of days. And it's my understanding that we need to call back once it's done to make an appointment so he can do another call, walkthrough.
Okay, that's, that's exactly the type of information I was looking for. Thank you, Mr. Petracca.
You're welcome.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. President, right now.
Okay, thank you Kevin. I'm going to open it up to the council, and maybe I'll start with Sharon, who is not present at town hall. Sharon, you have some questions for the applicant for this license hearing tonight?
Yes, I have, I have one about the well that's going to be used for the property. I just want to make sure, is it, does it pass the certification with the state?
Well, this is Attorney Chris Mocelli. I can speak in regards to, I mean, the applicant can as well, but as the town council may be aware, there is a proposed solar field that's, is being proposed. It's in the planning board stage that abuts New Frontier Road's property. Currently, the well is on that property. So we are in talks with the new proposed, the owner currently and the new proposed applicant, which we don't know, I don't think it's been determined if that solar field is going to be approved yet, but there has been talks that if that goes through, that we would have to put, install a new well on New Frontier Road or the property of BCP LLC, I guess. But that would be, that would be, the owners of the property would have to do that. The tenant's not going to be responsible for doing that. But a lot of it's in flux because of this solar.
Okay, Sharon, anything else for the applicant or the applicant's representatives?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone at town hall? We've got Counselor Thompson, Kapalbo, Hurst, and myself. Anyone else want to ask some questions about the applicant before the hearing? Scott Billhurst, you have the floor.
Scott Billhurst, Vice President of Town Council. I just want to clarify, so I understand, to the applicant, am I correct to assume that Patrick Kane did not come to the town hall with you in regard to applying for the license or licenses for this establishment?
That's, that's not, that wasn't the question. Patrick Kane was at the town hall with her. The question that I recall the solicitor asking is if he financed the application, which he did not.
Correct.
Okay.
I thank you for the response.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Barbara or Sylvia, do you have any questions for the applicant? Barbara?
Yes, thank you. It's Barbara Kapalbo. Can Ms. Rodinghouse please let me know, I have some questions for her. This will be a new restaurant for you, and it seems that this is the first time you've run or managed a restaurant of this size. How many seats are you planning on having in the restaurant portion, and how many seats are you planning on having at the bar portion?
Okay, so for the, 100 total.
100 total, but how many at the bar? How many at the restaurant?
We don't know that yet because there's a pool table that's in the location that she has determined that she's taking out, is that correct?
Yes.
So the, my understanding is the fire marshal has to come in and do another capacity outlay because there's, and she can speak to this, that there's areas in the place where she was thinking about potentially putting some couches or stools for a coffee thing in the morning. And unfortunately, Counselwoman, we don't, because of what's going on, we just can't determine exactly how it's going to be outlaid until we know what the numbers are going to be.
Okay, I understand that. And then my understanding is, again, we didn't still have all the fire inspections, and I did understand your reasoning, but we definitely don't have those. And April 2020, was that her tip, her TIPS certification, or has she had that before as well?
That was April of 2020, yes.
So that was the first time you took the TIPS, is April 2020 for Rhode Island?
For Rhode Island, yes, but I did have it previously in California.
In California, all right. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for you. It is certainly biting off a big chunk all at one time. I know you have great expectations, and I would hope that they go very well. However, I also think that it's wise of you to think about the pausing for COVID-19 because all of the rules for. because all of the rules and regulations for restaurant seating and availability and the bar, which is basically not allowed any longer, will be very difficult to create with a strong financial profit and loss sheet. So I do understand your reasonable pausing because of COVID-19 as you're organizing, managing a 100-plus seating area with reservations and all of the problems that that entails now with COVID-19 as well. I have two family members that are bartenders and manage a restaurant in Providence. So it is quite a complex entity. I appreciate the information, and I wish you well. But I do think you have quite a number of hurdles to resolve. Thank you.
That was Councilwoman Kapalbo. And I think next up is Counselor Thompson, Sylvia Thompson.
Yep, Sylvia here. I got, you know, some of the things that come through, I didn't quite get. Now, Mrs. or Ms. Rodingham, I'm sorry, can I call you Teresa?
Yes, thank you.
That's easier. Teresa, one of the questions I had is, you said you're a server in Parketuck. Can you name the restaurant, or spell it for the record?
Yes, Mia's, Mia's Cafe.
Oh, okay, all right. Now, what do you do there exactly?
I am the lead server there.
In the evening, I guess?
Oh, for breakfast.
Oh, when you say server, you don't mean alcohol, you mean serving food?
Both. We actually make our own drinks there too, so I do bartend as well.
So do they have a TIPS in Connecticut?
They have a TIPS?
TIPS, yes.
Okay, so you have that for Connecticut, correct? And so when you work in Mia's, you serve alcohol? Well, when does alcohol start? I'm just wondering, how much experience do you have at Mia's? How long have you been there? And how often do you actually serve alcohol there?
I have worked there for two years. We do serve alcohol seven days a week. We start at 9:00 a.m. We make our own cocktails. I do a lot of mimosas and Bloody Marys also. We have beer as well, so we have a full bar.
All right. The other establishment that you worked in, I don't know how many there were. You mentioned, or your lawyer mentioned that you had lots of experience in serving and in training, I believe. So when you were in San Diego for quite a few years, could you explain exactly what you did and spell for the record the name of the restaurant? I assume it was a restaurant.
Yes, so the main restaurant that I worked at was called Carl Strauss. It's K-A-R-L-S-T-R-A-U-S-S. That's where I spent most of my time. And that's where I became Cicerone certified. I was a beer trainer, shift supervisor, manager there. I owned my own catering company out there as well, where we did serve alcohol. I was a private catering company. I was also hired on as a manager at a place called Del Taco. I was a server at Islands. I've been a server at The Olive Garden in San Diego and in Virginia. And then the first restaurant that I worked at was called The Silver Diner, where I was the lead trainer. I was also the expediter and food runner.
Thank you.
And then when I moved out here, I was hired on as a sous chef at Blue Rock Catering.
How many years were you at Carl Strauss?
Six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sylvia?
No.
Okay. Teresa, this is Council President Frank Landolfi. Do you have a resume that you could send to us, I guess, as well? Is that something you have?
I can provide that, yes.
Okay. And so, you know, a lot of questions have already been asked by the solicitor and the counsel. That's the downfall of being the last one to speak. But I guess my question is just in a general sense. You know, obviously, you know, the elephant in the room is the incident that happened, you know, last August. And, you know, my fear is, you know, you spend a lot of money, you know, if you get the license and pour into this property and no one shows up, you know. I guess, have you given that any thought? You know, as a banker, I get real nervous when, you know, the public sentiment might be one way, and then, you know, you're going to be investing a lot of money. There's a lot of restaurants just quite honestly don't make it. So have you given any thought to that? And if so, what are your thoughts to that comment?
I am aware of the accident, I'm familiar with it. However, I do believe this is a great opportunity for myself, and I'm looking to move forward in my career. With me doing breakfast and lunch, I believe that it would be a good thing for the community. I think that they need a breakfast place. So I think pushing breakfast and lunch, as well as dinner eventually, is a good way to go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have, this is Sylvia. I have one more question, Teresa, and if you're not comfortable with it, that's okay. I was wondering what your age is.
I am 36.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So young, so young. Anything else from the council?
Frank, this is Sharon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, go ahead.
Teresa, you said you wanted to have a capacity of 100 people. With the COVID situation, you will have to, a lot of restaurants are going to have to be like at 25% or 50% of capacity. So what's that number to you? And I guess I can ask, can I ask if you think you're going to break even with, you know, say 50% of that capacity? So, or, you know, have you thought about how you're going to have the tables six feet apart? That kind of thing?
Yes, I am aware, like everything that's going on, I will try to make it up with takeout and curbside service as well.
Teresa, you faded out a little bit. Can you repeat that? I didn't hear it. This is Council President Frank.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I said I will try to make it up with takeout and curbside service as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Scott Billhurst, Vice President, has another question for Teresa.
My question is, I think a legitimate concern is water after the incident last year and a place shoving alcohol, you know, right near the interstate. And how do you plan to maintain water so that nothing gets out of hand? And do you plan to have, you know, some type of off-duty police officer? Or do you plan, how do you just plan to how to address any potential problems that could arise so that we don't have a repeat of what we had last year?
Right. I do understand. I will be running it appropriately and will not be over-serving customers.
Okay. Yes, Sylvia Thompson has another question.
I actually don't have a question. I just have to tell you that you, I can sense or feel your energy and desire to move forward and plan out perhaps owning your own restaurant and managing it. But I have to tell you, I'm very uncomfortable with this applicant for this liquor license. I'm not opposed to the Victor Ling license or the Holiday license. But I'm uncomfortable with the relationship between the owner and this new LLC. So I'm not in favor of this, I just want to let you know.
On that, on a similar, this is Barbara Kapalbo. On a similar note, I'm actually not concerned about the relationship. I am concerned about the, this particular time and this particular world we're living in right now. And I am concerned because I want you to succeed. And I do believe, like Sylvia, that you have the energy and you have the real gung-ho to do this. You'd love to, I think it's wonderful, but I do not want this to fail. And my only concern with the liquor license is if we approve the liquor license, we are only allowed four or five of them in the first place. We have then given a liquor license to a place that may not be able to open for liquor just because of COVID. Because I know the restaurants in Providence are having real problems on how they can do liquor without a bar effectively. And I know that is also a very large portion of your net. So I'm concerned overall that if we provide a liquor license, we have lost a liquor license for another possible commercial enterprise. Because I think there are still a number of things that have not been accomplished yet that need to be. So those are my concerns. I also have no concern with the Victor Ling license nor the Holiday license. I am just concerned about the liquor license because I would really like you to succeed and not fail in this day and age with COVID. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else on the council? Sharon, you all set?
Yeah, I'm set.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the applicant or their, or her representatives?
Yes, Mr. President, Chairman. I don't, I would just like to say, I don't understand where the comments are coming from regarding Providence because Providence is not having a problem serving liquor. They're having a problem serving food. They can actually sell takeout liquor in the city of Providence. So, and we would never ask for that. But there is actually not a problem in Providence. And quite frankly, with all due respect, if my client and her LLC is qualified, I don't know how you don't grant her a liquor license. If she does fail, then the liquor license goes back on the shelf and could be given to somebody else. But when does the time come that she gets the opportunity to compete with this other business that may be coming out of the shadows that might be in a better time? So the issue is whether or not my client's qualified. And while we understand COVID, she's willing to give it a go during this tumultuous time. But based on what I heard, I guess we're going to wait until, or you want to wait until it's a better time. And then if somebody comes out for a liquor license and you don't grant hers, does she get an shot to go head-to-head with that other business that you're saving it for? So I think she's qualified. I think she deserves the shot, and I think the license should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petracca. Yes, Sylvia.
I would just add, this is Sylvia, to my comment and say, while I appreciate her energy and passion, I don't hear, or to my satisfaction, that she has the experience to take on a restaurant with a liquor license. The number of liquor licenses in the town of Hopkinton, they don't, you know, they don't go on a shelf. Every year, we hear some, and we set the number. And we've been careful about our liquor licenses. And I think we should continue to be careful. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sylvia. Any other comments from the council, the applicants or applicant's representatives? Before I open it up to the public?
No.
Scott?
You know, I would like to have a response because...
Scott, speak into the mic, please.
Councilman Hurst, the Vice President. I am just concerned, I do have a concern about the liquor license aspect. Victhing license and the other license, I don't really have a problem with. But, you know, restroom business, I'm not in the restroom business, but I can't comment professionally on that. But people want to take the risk. But I'm just concerned about the liquor license. And the big question is, are you not interested if you don't get the liquor license where you get the other two licenses?
No, we'll have to make that determination when you make the determination as a board as to what you're going to do with the licenses. And then we'll have to make that determination ourselves. So we can't answer that question right now until we hear what you're going to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think I'll open it up to the public. Anyone out there wishing to be heard on this particular matter? Raise your hand, and I'll get to you one at a time. All right, phone number ending in 8222. Please identify yourself, and you've got the floor.
Good evening, this is Joe Moreau. I live on Old People Road. And I was at the hearing in August, and I was there with my wife. And we were very concerned on the actions that were going on at that restaurant. It's nice to hear someone that wants to open their own restaurant and a liquor license. And that, I would have a concern with that. But I may have missed it because I didn't hear everything that the attorney said with a connection. But our solicitor asked a question. If you would provide a written document to the fact that the former owners would not be involved in this project at all? And like I said, I may have missed it, but what was the answer to that question as far as providing written documentation that they will have nothing to do with that operation as far as running it or as far as being employees there? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Maselli or Mr. Petracca?
That wasn't the question, so we can't answer it because it was never asked. He's asking what we answered because he didn't hear it. No one asked us to give a written answer to that. They wanted her voice tonight, which we gave. So we answered all questions that you and your solicitor posed, and we answered them in the proper form. I don't want the public to be misled. That question was never asked.
Okay.
I respectfully disagree. I thought Kevin asked that question, and maybe we can get a clarification.
I don't need a clarification, sir, with all due respect. He did not ask that question in that manner.
All right, hold on, guys. Yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Frank, Mr. Moreau, the question I asked, I asked the question twice. Once I asked a yes/no question. And then I essentially asked for her to make a statement in the form of a declarative statement, for which she did do that. She made a sentence, a clear statement that neither of the former principals in the old operation would be involved in the future. She did do that, that's what I asked her. I never asked her for a written statement. So to that extent, Mr. Petracca is correct.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else in the public have any questions or comments on this application? I see no hands. Okay. All right, so next up, what do we want to do, council?
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the liquor license, the BV liquor license to New Frontier LLC. Teresa Dogg Rodingham. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion by the council? All right, having heard none, all those in favor of not granting the license signify by saying your name and yes or no.
Scott Billhurst, against granting the license, no.
What did you say?
Against granting.
I support Sylvia's motion.
Okay.
Barbara Kapalbo, aye.
Sylvia Thompson, yes.
Sharon?
I think they deserve to have the license, so I'm not going to, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, okay.
Just make sure Scott Billhurst, I said yes.
Yeah, you're in agreement with Sylvia, correct? All right, so, and then I agree with Sylvia. I just don't think Teresa Rodinghouse has enough management experience with a large-scale bar restaurant. So, yeah, that's my reason, but, so, yeah, so that's... large scale bar restaurant. So yeah, that's my reason. But so yeah, so that's that's my, I agree with Sylvia. And Sharon, what do you, so we have four in favor of not granting the license. And Sharon, what is your take? You want to vote for the license granting?
Correct.
Okay.
I do.
All right. So the motion, the motion does carry. So no license will be issued. Four to one vote.
I move that we approve the vittling license for filed by New Frontier LLC, Teresa Dove, Rondinghouse.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye, Sharon Davis.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Barbara Capalbo, aye. Sylvia, yes.
Frank Landoff, yes.
Chairman? Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Your, if your solicitor may interject here, your motion is improper, and I would just like it properly done. Your original motion was for a BV license. The B and the V are separate, but your original motion indicated a BV. So I think you need to make it clear that the first one was for the B and the second one was for the V because BV was stated as one license and it's not.
That was in the documentation that was given to us.
That's what the agenda item reads. But Kevin, you want to clarify that?
Yeah, just I just think, just so there's no ambiguity in the record and there's no technical issues to be raised. I think if you just have a revote on the motion regarding the liquor license, just refer to it as the liquor license.
Okay, sure.
Second would be on the list, the vittling license, and the third would be on the Sunday sales license. That's
I just, Kevin.
I would, just to make it clear, so we don't have an issue going forward on this, I think that's the right way to do it.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you, gents. I appreciate that.
Okay, so Lisa, you would like us to withdraw the previous motion or leave it as it, no.
You would have to withdraw.
Withdraw.
Withdraw the vote.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
We have to withdraw the vote.
Draw the second.
Withdraw the second, whoever seconded.
I withdrawn.
Okay. All right. The motion was made to withdraw and was seconded, Lisa.
Okay, I'll make it more expansive. I move that we
Let's vote, first of all, let's vote on the withdrawal, please.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor of the withdrawal signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
I move that we deny the application for a Class BV liquor license filed by New Frontier.
Sylvia, liquor license, just liquor license.
Just class B.
Just liquor license.
Class B.
Class B, right.
I'm just reading the agenda item.
I know.
I know.
The attorney just
He doesn't want the BV.
No. Just say liquor license.
Okay, I move that we deny the application for a liquor license filed by New Frontier LLC, Teresa Dove, Rondinghouse, President, 44 Oak Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, for property located at 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, owned by BCP LLC, 15 Frontier Road, Ashway, Rhode Island.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's four ayes. Sharon?
No, I'm not going to vote. I think they deserve the license, so I'm not saying aye.
Okay, yep.
Opposed.
Yep, the motion carries four to one. And we had, we had a motion made and seconded on the vittling, Lisa, I believe, right?
Yes, that was, that was done.
Okay.
That was complete.
That's complete. Okay, good. All right. So next up would be the holiday sales license?
A move that we approve the holiday sales license for, let's see, for filed by New Frontier LLC, Teresa Dove, Rondinghouse, President, 44 Oak Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, for property located at 15A Frontier Road, Ashway, owned by BCP LLC, 15 Frontier Road, Ashway.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the holiday sales license signify by saying aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay.
Motion to adjourn this licensing board and reconvene as counsel.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the proposed ordinance amendment to chapters 272 and 273. Open a public hearing to consider amendments to chapters 272 and 273 of the Town of Hopkinton zoning ordinance requested by Hopkinton Town Councilor Sylvia Thompson for property owned by Atlantic Solar LLC, 260 West Exchange Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, and Atlantic Control Systems, Inc., 318 Drybridge Road, North Kingston, Rhode Island, 02852, for property located at Zero Main Street, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, identified as assessors, plat 7, lot 32, plat 10, lot 87, plat 11, lot 35, and RFR 80 zone. The Town Council shall consider an amendment relative to one of the conditions in the ordinance setting the amount of the cash decommissioning bond for the proposed PSES project to be constructed on said property by striking the phrase out of $25,000 per megawatt AC and substituting therefore the phrase to be determined by the planning board. Okay, is the applicant, I'm not sure if the applicant's out there from Atlantic Solar, anyone out there?
Actually, it was Councilor Thompson who proposed the amendment. I did send out the agenda to Mr. Epps and to Attorney Craven.
Okay. I've got a couple of hands that are up, so I'm going to unmute them and see what that comes. Is anyone out there, the representing Atlantic Solar that I just unmuted?
Yes, Mr. President, Bob Craven, I'm here, and Frank Epps is also on the line.
Okay, what are the last four digits of your phone numbers, please?
Mine is 2700.
Okay. And is Frank on the same phone or has he had a different phone?
He's had a different phone.
Frank? Frank, last four
Frank, if you can hear me, just press star nine, I believe, and orally give the last four digits of the number you're calling from. Frank Epps, that is. Yes, this is Frank Epps. I am at 1396.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, guys. Okay. All right, Sylvia, I guess you propose this. So why don't you, you know, give us the lay of the land, what your thoughts are and why you brought it forward?
This is Sylvia. It's very simple. The amendment that I'm asking for would change a few words. And if the amendment is eventually approved, the language would mirror what the language was for the Skunk Hill solar project, of which the same developer and principals are, or should you say the developer, is involved in both projects. So what I'm asking for is that the language that we put on the decision to approve the Atlantic Solar, and it was that we, there would be a bond amount for decommissioning of 25,000 per megawatt AC. And I'm asking that instead that length, the 25,000 per megawatt AC be changed and inserted determined by the planning board. Now, the planning board and Aldiaro's Board Chair, and in the ordinance that the board would determine the, our solar ordinance, that the planning board has the authority to determine the decommissioning bond amounts, and it would be based on scientific data. And they would secure an expert or they would use the town's engineers. And that would be at the applicant's cost. And the applicant, well, the bottom line is the planning board should handle this. It's in there, it's in the solar ordinance. Now, it doesn't mean that the council did anything wrong. I'm just suggesting that in the interest of, in the interest of consistency and continuity that that the language should be to be determined by the planning board. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sylvia. Scott, do you have a question on this application?
No, I, I know there's a question that I really think you mentioned.
Can't hear you.
Scott, speak into the microphone.
I think it's a mess, a thing of consistency with Councilor Thompson, and I understand it, and I will vote for it.
Okay. Sharon, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, I think that it's also good, and I will vote for it.
Okay. Barbara, you have the floor. I guess it seems to be your verbiage in the last motion to approve that's resulting in this agenda item. So you have the floor, Barbara?
Thank you. As to Councilor Thompson's proposed amendment, generally, I would agree with her point of view. However, I would prefer not going backwards, which would set a precedent. And my prior decision for Zero Main Street of 25,000 per megawatt was based on Crossman engineers' prior determination for Maxon Hill. And it is similar to the newer determination of 30,000 per megawatt on the Frontier Road property application, which is before the planning board now. At the time of Zero Main Street, the planning board had been hearing from inexpert testimony of decommissioning costs above $1 million or more. I believe that was totally unreasonable and bordered on harassment of the developer as they are expected to listen to and defend against unprofessional arguments and unknowable determinations 50 years in the future. Crossman engineers have been balanced, objective, professional, and open to further detailed information as needed. If the planning board is going to follow its own rules and the town's engineers' advice in the future, then I would not have a concern. At present, after the last planning board meeting of July 15, I still have trouble with the relevant opinions expressed concerning the need to follow their own rules. We don't live in an ivory tower, and we do not know the future. But we live in a practical and cooperative world. And I am hoping that the planning board will return to that. But at the moment, I would prefer not going backwards, but to go forward with the planning board making the decommissioning cost as long as they follow their own rules and regulations.
Yeah, one, one second, Scott. All right, thanks. Thanks, Barbara. I just had a quick question. Frank or Bob Craven? What is the energy, what is the megawatt output for Zero Main Street?
It's approximately four and a half to five, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, guys. Kevin, I just have a quick question, legal question. So clearly, you know, the decommissioning falls under the purview of the planning board. I don't think anyone's going to dispute that. They deal with that, you know, quite often. My question to Kevin, the solicitor, is, you know, going forward, you know, if we had other, other applications, and we decide, any councillor for that matter, not just Barbara, decides to place a decommissioning amount in their motion, and it's approved by the council, I guess my quandary is, you know, if it's approved by the council, and then, you know, the planning board has purview under decommissioning, like, which one takes over, I guess? Is it perfectly acceptable, I guess, for a councillor to put that in their motion and have that be effective going forward? Or does that pose a problem with the planning board and what their functions are? I guess, so I just need to get that,
Yeah, this is Kevin McAlister. That's an easy question for me to answer. And I'll start by answering it this way. What the council did on the March 2, 2020 vote, which created this ordinance, which is before you with a proposed amendment tonight, that was perfectly legal for the council to put in a condition setting the decommissioning bond amount at whatever they did. So yes, going forward on a specific project, on a specific parcel of land, when doing a zoning amendment and an amendment to the future land use map, the law is pretty clear that the Town Council has the authority to override the generic PSES ordinance, which ordinarily would allow the planning board to make that determination. But when the council sees fit to, to address it itself in the process of enacting an amendment, changing the zoning and the future land use maps, map, it absolutely has the authority to do, to do that. So what the council did on March 2, and enacting those ordinances, was perfectly legal and enforceable. If the council changes that tonight, that's also perfectly legal and enforceable. So I guess, I guess that's as best I can answer your question. I hope that's, that's
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, ultimately, you know, if the planning board has the purview, does what the council approve and somehow get, somehow not be enforceable, I guess. But you've answered that question. So yeah, you know, we all made the decision in March. That was part of the motion. It was approved, and I'm not willing to go back on it. Again, knowing full well, the planning board, I know, has purview over decommissioning, but the motion was made to include this amount, which again, when you add up this amount times the megawatt of the project, it's not terribly out of line with what it should be anyway. So I'm not in favor of changing it, only because I voted back in March to approve the project with that, with that in the motion.
Frank?
Yes, Sharon?
I think I support Sylvia's change because it's a matter of being consistent. And I do think that the planning board probably has a better way of determining this amount. And I also think that what the decommissioning amounts that were set in the beginning, things change. And I don't think that necessarily using the same formula from the beginning should, if we've made a mistake and we've underestimated in the past, why should we continue? So I think it's much better to have the planning board get, you know, an expert. And I would rather they did it. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Sharon. Scott?
Well, Scott Billhurst, Vice President, I support this. When we initially voted on this before, I thought that usually, once you make a decision, you should stick with it, which would have made me vote with Barbara and Frank at that time. But I supported Sylvia because of the consistency with the planning board, and also, as my understanding, and Mr. Epps and company were, had no problem having the planning board set it. But to make a change right after you make a decision, I did have concerns about, and I could have went either way on that vote. But I decided to vote with Sylvia, which I ruled tonight. But when the council makes a decision, unless you really have a compelling reason, you should stick with that decision. So I'm going against that premise tonight, as I did in that vote earlier. But I can see both sides on this issue, but I'll vote with Sylvia on this. Thank you.
Yeah, Sylvia?
I've got a question. I, I thought, what I was looking for is Barbara had said at the hearing and tonight, that the amount of 25,000 per megawatt, and she may have added a little bit to it, as she noted, but that it was based on something from Crossman Engineering, our town engineering firm, and it relates to Maxon Hill. I asked Bill if he had a copy of that letter, and he doesn't have any copy from Maxon Hill, I mean, from Crossman Engineering. Can you tell me where that ever came from?
Maxon, Maxon Hill's decommission cost, in Lampier, went to Crossman Engineering, and they said 20,000 per megawatt. And so what I did on Zero Main Street is I 15% rounded it up. And so what I did on Zero Main Street is I 15% rounded it up to 25, because it was a year or two later. And now this next one that they were listening to, July, is 30,000, because again, it's another six or seven months later. And Crossman came up with that one.
Is there anything in writing?
So it was very much, there was very much in line.
Was there anything in writing? Or was it just a conversation?
That would have been with Jim Lampier and Crossman Engineering. I would assume they'd have something in writing.
So when you found out the information, it was by email or conversation?
Conversation with Jim Lampier.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, since Frank, you know, I, I understand the planning board obviously has purview under decommissioning, but, you know, the, the council, you know, and all the solar projects that have come before us, I don't, I don't know that we've had that many where a decommissioning amount was put in, into our findings of fact, so this doesn't happen that often. And for whatever reason, Barbara made the motion with that included in there, and I approved it with that, so that's why I'm, I'm not going back on my, my approval of that motion, so, but it looks like it may, it may get carried over, over at the end of the day anyway, so, but, okay. All right, so everyone spoke on the council. Any public comment on this application? Okay, I don't see any hands up, okay. Just had a quick question for Bob Craven or Frank Epps. You guys are okay, I think, with this going over to planning, right?
Frank, do you want to address that, or I'm happy to?
Yeah, either, either one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I meant, I meant to, to, because I was listening.
To the, yeah, I apologize. I apologize for interrupting. To the council, this is Frank Epps from Energy Development Partners. Councilor Thompson contacted me and asked me for my consideration in making this change, in making it consistent with the, with the planning boards, and also with the, the decision concerning Skunk Hill. It was, at, at first, I, I, I decided, at first I was, I was not fully in agreement, but after thinking it over and understanding the issues concerning solar products in the town and so on, I felt it was in our, in everybody's best interest to agree and support Councilor Thompson's request. And so, yes, we are fine with it, and, and I look forward to moving this forward with the, with the planning board as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks Frank. Scott Hurst?
I would like to say to Mr. Epps, thanks for being a gentleman and understanding of the situation, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes Barbara?
And Mr. Epps and Mr. Craven, and so you were on the line listening to the July 15th planning board meeting? That was last Wednesday?
Unfortunately, Councilor, no, I, I personally was not.
And Mr. Craven?
I did not hear it either Barbara.
It was, it was, it was, it was, no, it was on Zero Main Street decommissioning. And so I'm sorry you weren't on that, because it wasn't exactly following Crossman Engineers. That is postponed now till August, oh no, I'm sorry, that was on Colombo's Frontier, and that will be postponed August. That's fine, thank you. I'm sorry, you wouldn't have been there, it was not yours.
No, no, it wasn't yours, that's what I thought it was. It's revenue, that was revenue, okay.
Too many projects.
Yeah. All right, all right, thanks. I guess, anyone else have any comments, questions on this particular item? All right, we need to either close it and set a date for a decision?
No one from the public?
No hands.
Okay.
No hands.
A move that we close the hearing and set a date.
Okay. Lisa, what do you, what do you got? What are you thinking?
I second.
I'm sorry. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So your question was to, as to what dates we could, as a matter on our decision?
Correct.
Your next regularly scheduled town council meeting is August 3rd. You have another one on August 17th. I think both of them have solar-related matters on them.
Let's do the third.
I don't know if it matters or not, I'm just informing you.
Okay, all right.
I agree with the third.
Okay, the third, looks like everyone's okay with the third, so.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Please be safe, take care. Bye bye.
Thank you guys.
Bye bye.
Okay, let's see. Last public forum, I think. No. Proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 229. Open a public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter 229 of the Hopkinton Code of Ordinances, requested by Hopkinton Town Council President Frank Landolphe, specifically Article 1, Section 19-2B1A of Chapter 19, taxation. Article 1 entitled "When Interest Waived," the proposed amendment would correct a typographical error in the reference to the Rhode Island laws found in said Section 19-2B1, where it reads Rhode Island General Law, Section 44-5.8, and substitute that for citation Rhode Island General Law, Section 45-5-8.1. In addition, the proposed amendment, if enacted, would add the clause or place of business after the word residence and before the phrase of the taxpayer found in Section 19-2B1A of Chapter 229. The purpose of this, the purpose of this portion of the proposed amendment would be to extend taxpayer-owned places of business the opportunity to seek a waiver of payment of one quarter's worth of interest on one overdue property tax payment, subject to the same conditions currently available to taxpayers' personal residences. Again, this is the second time it's been on the agenda. I was approached by a business owner that pays a substantial amount of taxes to the town while I was at dinner at their establishment. They were severely affected by COVID-19, and they had gone to pay their, I think, March tax bill, and they got hit with a $200 late fee, and she had said, is there anything we can do? And so, at the time, I wasn't sure, because the ordinance that we enacted back in, I think it was 2013, that I sponsored, was to waive the interest for personal property, not businesses. So I felt, you know, why can't we add a component for businesses due to the COVID-19 situation? We hadn't, haven't done much to help local businesses in their time of need, and I felt this was a very minimal way that would affect the, the town minimally in terms of financial end, but it would also help the taxpayers of businesses that are greatly affected by the pandemic. So I, I hope everyone supports it. It's a restaurant that I've been at many, many times in town. I was going to have Kate call in, but I didn't want to put her on the spot, but, anyway. I know Barbara and Bill have gone there quite a bit, and it just seems like the right thing to do at the right time, so, anyway. Anyone else have any comments? Barbara?
I'd like to commend the council president for his leadership on, leadership in this issue, and I hope this is just one, I assume the council will pass it. This is one case that the council does support business in the town of Hopkinton. Your other comments were anti-business. This is one example, I think, will show that the council of this town is pro-business in Hopkinton. Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Barbara?
I also appreciate the fact that you've done this for the businesses, as well as for the personal residences. I don't think that it's a hardship. It's going to happen only once every five years, and it's only for one quarter. I think it's a, a very good idea. I'm glad that Kate brought that up, and I do hope that we'll pass that.
Thanks Barbara.
Hopefully unanimous.
Looks like Sylvia went to the restroom, so Sharon, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, I'm definitely in favor of it.
Thank you, thank you very much. I don't know if I should wait for Sylvia to come back.
Wait for Sylvia.
Okay. Yeah. Sylvia, Sylvia is back, okay. Everyone else has commented. Sylvia, if you want, if you have any comments, certainly.
It's a great idea. It was just an oversight. They should have been included way back. It just wasn't something that we thought of, so thank you for bringing it up Frank.
Yep, thank you very much. All right, so I guess we can, we have a motion to close it, close the hearing. Oh, let me hear anyone from the public, I guess want to weigh in on this. We need a motion to close, close the hearing and set a date for decision?
Motion to close the hearing and set a date for decision.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. August 3rd?
Want to do August 3rd Lisa? That's probably okay too, right?
Sure, that's fine, yep.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you all. Okay. Consent agenda. Approved July 6, 2020 town council meeting minutes. Set Tuesday, September 1, 2020, as the first town council meeting in September, due to Labor Day holiday on September 7, and the primary on September 8, 2020, except the following monthly financial activity report, town clerk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks all. First public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard on any of the agenda items for tonight? I see Mr. Morrow. Joe, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I also want to thank Frank and the council for working with the businesses in our town. I agree with everything that you said. Dayton West and their family, really, and all the businesses deserve help. This council knows how I became involved in our town. I have been involved with many other functions of the town, you know, including the budgeting process, the charitable budget, and planning board meetings and so forth. I've also tried to help the residents in our town. One thing I do want to mention about tonight is a solar project at Palmer Circle. The reason why I want to mention this is that there are two other solar projects coming up at Palmer Circle. And according to Jim Lampier, there are other projects, as well as solar projects, in the pipeline. The Palmer Circle Array started generating power on November 21, 2019. As of today, none of the plantings for the buffer have been done. The retention pond still has issues. That has not been fixed. They use a hydro seed, they had cubes of hydro seed, planted grass, and they had it on pallets, and they had a blue top that was covering the pallets. Well, that pallet is still where it was left last year. I understand the project's not completed, but you're generating power for that project. It's been over, almost a year now with, with this laying there. And a butter next door had to build his own runoff system. He built a ditch to stop the water from running onto his property. Reason why I'm concerned about this, one tenth of a mile, there's another solar array that's already under construction at Palmer Circle. Another tenth of a mile is the huge one, which I believe is called Stone Ridge. I had a suggestion for Jim Lampier, and my idea was not to allow the solar array to start generating power until the town signed off and it was approved. Well, as usual, Jim got back information, but basically, with the permit process through the electricity state solar permit, once the developer does a witness test with National Grid, the town cannot stop that. So that's why our hands were kind of hot. I mean, if you look at that project, they still have the green stone walls all over the place, they're close to the road. I'm surprised the, the town, when they plowed the road, didn't tear those up. Jim did say the planning board will have to put in place a performance guarantee, ensuring the process will be built according to the approved plan, including land state. And I thought that was a great idea. I know in speaking with Jim today, when I went up to Palmer Circle, I noticed that the gate was unlocked, and the locks had just shown on the ground. There's a number there, which I called, sent a voicemail, and Jim said that he would take care of it. He also told me that Talia was out today, and she was inspecting the solar arrays, and I, I think that's great. I understand some projects are what we classify by right, but all of us want these projects done right. The residents have to look at these projects in our town by the developer, especially for Palmer Circle. Pine Gate is out of North Carolina. Recently, the developer damaged the road in two places and had to repair it. Now there is a small pile of asphalt left over by the pallet with the blue top. I can't say for sure that it was the developer that did that, but seems to me when someone is working on asphalt and the next day that pile is there. These developers push and push, as was evident, listening to the last planning board meeting for three and a half hours, and the special planning board meeting for three hours. If the attorney had her away, the meeting would have been extended to 10:30. It's also refreshing to hear Mr. Epps and Mr. Craven, who really are sincere about working with our town. The last thing I want to say in closing is, I believe that the residents, the town employees, and officials of our town have the responsibility to do what is in the best interest of our town. And I think most times, we do that, but I'm really concerned with the follow-up on this one project, as well as the follow-up on other projects. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Forrest B. Wright, Robert Morgan, and the late United States Representative John Lewis of Georgia. And I'd like to comment on all three, if I can.
Sure.
Just a second.
Could you please repeat all three?
Scott, please.
I move that we adjourn in memory of Forrest B. Wright, Robert Morgan, and United States Representative John Lewis of Georgia.
Thank you.
And Sylvia, seconded. Yes Scott?
Got it, thank you.
Forrest Wright was town council president of this town from '72 to '74, was, on the council from '70 to '74. He died in 2018, and I was talking to his niece, and I asked how he was, and she said he died in 2018, and it wasn't even local paper. So there's a lot of former residents of this town that have moved out of the area, and you know, you know, you might be talking about them, and you don't know they died. And Forrest was really committed to this town. Robert Morgan recently died, he was a World War II veteran and a longtime resident of Hopkinton, and he's certainly going to be missed. And of course, everybody's talking about Congressman John Lewis of Georgia, civil rights pioneer. I actually had a chance to have my picture taken with him years ago, and he should be remembered tonight. He was a national figure, and out of respect to him and his memory, those are the three people I wish to honor this evening with adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you Scott.
Okay, thanks Scott. All right, we have a motion made and seconded, and for an adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you all, and have a good night. Thank you very much for your help. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.